Good evening. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, March 2, 2015, in the Boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the March 5, 2015, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notices required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Nicole, do we have ... Is she here? Any CLC members that need to be ...
Chuck Brandt.
Hi Chuck! What's up Chuck? Thank you Chuck. Appreciate your service. Oh, I also need to recognize our AVP crew. They are from Cypress Creek High School. There's Gabrielle Hall, Jake Meeks, Ador Manansala, and Alex Carballo. He's a graduate in 2014. And Ador, I did the best I could. I know, I know. I probably should have practiced. The Board will hear the following report, Agenda Item 4A. The administration will provide a written report on the district's participation in purchasing co-ops for the 2013-14 school year. Do any Board members have questions on this? Bob?
Matt, are you ... Are you up there?
There's Matt.
I didn't have anything, I just wanted to see you get up. I'm just kidding.
Walk all the way up there.
Now, I'm just curious because I noticed that we do ... We do get a rebate from the Tasby, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's based on what we buy and then some of the things are rebated to us? Is that what it is?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
We get ... I don't know what the percentage is, but it is based on our total purchases from that co-op.
Okay.
And it was 14,000, our rebate this year was $14,202.
And the amount that you showed, that's just how much we spent with them, is that right? Ninety-six?
No, actually, we don't show the amount we spent, but with ...
I'm sorry, that was the transaction fee.
That's the rebate and that's the fees they charged.
Okay, great.
We spent about $4.6 million with Byboard last year.
And on the final one, it's Harris County Department of the VED?
Yes, sir.
What ... Are there services there that we don't get anywhere else, or is that ...
Good question. With HCD-E, I'll tell you kind of what we buy from them. We buy a lot of furniture, some food service equipment, some grounds equipment, and a lot of school supplies. They have just some really good contracts that give us a lot of flexibility in the procurement.
Okay, all right. Good, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Any additional questions? Thank you, Matt. Agenda Item 4B, the administration will provide a written report on the 2015 summer school plans for elementary, middle school, and high school. Did any Board members have questions on that? That will take us ... We'll now review ... Whoop, whoop. Bob, Bob, sorry.
I'm sorry. Linda, this will be for you. That amazing camp that we had last year and we were talking about increasing the amount this year, is that what the plan is? Are we going to the camp, is it the Camp Summit? Yeah.
I'm gonna let Mr. Hiss know. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. He's gonna give her the memo. Right now, what we have budgeted, Mr. Covey, is the same amount of money that we had last year. However, we're able to enhance that with Title I funds. So, we're able to add more additional kits above what we funded last year with some of our Title I funds at our Title I campuses. So, Title I can be above and beyond, so you can add some, you just can't support the entire program with it.
And that might bring into question another thing, this legislative portability on Title I, that would adversely affect something that we're doing in the summer, then wouldn't it?
It would affect a lot of what we do with Title I, Mr. Covey, because there would be no certainty with how much money we have. Everything from initiatives that campuses have at ... Or initiatives that campuses have aren't actually there at the campus level, as well as our summer school, as well as staff members that we pay for with Title I and the campuses pay for with Title I. It would be very, very difficult to plan and project any type of initiatives if that was in place.
Okay. Thank you.
The Board will now review and discuss the following action items. Agenda Item 5A, the Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. We have 10-gigabyte wavelength service, athletic and clinic first aid supplies, electronic technology equipment, repair parts and repair service, enterprise wireless system and onboarding device access system, internet infrastructure components, priority two, E-Rate, janitorial supplies, lamps, library books, publications and media supplies, mass communication notification system, network equipment, property insurance, sheet music ... Got to be careful how you say that one. And vocational lab supplies, equipment, and housewares. Any questions from Board members? Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, on Item 9, which is mass communication notification system, we're being asked to renew the license. And although the dollar amount is typically below my scope, I was excited, sufficiently excited when you first introduced this, that I'd like a brief follow-up to see how the first year went.
Certainly. Mr. Jackson and members of the Board, I ran a, just a report on the last six months of our use of School Messenger. And you know, we started last year, but this year we really opened it up to all the campuses being able to send their notifications. We send attendance, we do food service, transportation, general notifications, as well as emergency communications. And so, just over the last 250 days, I ran a report and we have, we're just shy of 1 million phone calls, which I was very happy to see. But what I'm really impressed with is the number of emails that we've been able to send. Now, this is district-wide. We're a little over 5 million emails that have been sent through the system. And we're just shy of 50,000 text messages. We just started doing the texting back in October when we launched the parent portal. And if you notice, we have the signs up there that say "Get the message," where we're encouraging parents to sign up so that they can manage their own contact information, they can actually go into the system. So, we expect the text messaging numbers to steadily increase, but I'm very surprised and happy to see how the campuses and district-wide folks have really been utilizing this system. We've been able to use it a couple times during school hour emergencies and let parents know exactly where they are, what's going on via text, email, and phone call. So, overall, we've been very pleased and we just expect these numbers to increase as we move forward.
A follow-up question. Are you, do you have feedback from the users that you're getting the results you want? Clearly, these are big numbers. But the other part of the question is, even though they're big numbers, are we getting accomplished what we wanted to accomplish?
I believe so. We're getting quite a bit of feedback from campus principals and community members saying that they really enjoy the ease of getting their information right at their phone, whether it's a text message or the email right to their mobile device. So, I do believe that it's serving the intended purpose and really helping people connect where they are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Any additional questions from Board members? Oh, okay, go ahead.
We have a number of different line items on the agenda that pertain to technology. Some of these are expansion requests, which is relatively common whenever you have technology initiatives, whether they're big or small. But I think we need to at least briefly touch these. So, the question is, basically explain this from a lay standpoint and then also talk a little bit about the contract extensions and why those extensions make sense or don't make sense.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson, members of the Board, Dr. Henry. In layman's terms, if we go back to where we were this time last year, in March of 2014, when the contracts were originally awarded, we look at the timeframe, it was right at the time that the Long Range Planning Committee had submitted their final recommendations. And so, the contracts that were approved in March really were our initial design, you might say, of the network. Throughout the year, after the 2014 bond referendum was approved, we moved into a phase where we did detailed network analysis and determined what our needs are for the network, which all of the contracts were built around and had to expand those contracts to take into consideration the goals of the 2014 bond. So, for example, the network was designed to support originally 150,000 concurrent users. After we heard the Long Range Planning Committee's requirements, their design, and went back and looked at the contracts, it required that we expand those to expand, for example, our network infrastructure to support greater than 400,000 concurrent users. And we're still within the bond cost allocations, so we feel very good about that. And at the same time, we have brought about expansions in the network to accommodate those 400,000-plus users in addition to securing our network and taking into consideration that we have now moved and received approval to build a co-location facility, so we actually have the two data centers along with the Blile data center. So, we actually have expanded our data centers from one to three.
And last year, didn't we approve certain contracts on a contingent basis so that we could apply for E-Rate funding?
Yes, sir.
Have we been, and of course, we're dealing with another government entity, and that's always interesting. Did that turn out to be a good approach? Were we successful in obtaining E-Rate funding from the government, or is it still a work in progress?
It's a work in progress. For example, Friday afternoon, we submitted for just the wireless infrastructure alone, a funding request to receive $3.3-plus million back in return. And if we do, in fact, receive those funds, that would go directly back into the bond so that we could possibly use those funds for other technology components or other items of the bond. We're in the process right now of applying for, with Presidio, for data cabling and for our network electronics. So, it is an ongoing process.
Another follow-up question. I understand that we had to change the scope and the scope increased fairly dramatically, and that's not uncommon. I would also imagine that the implementation time schedule would have been stretched. And I'm not saying that you should hold to the original implementation schedule, because when it comes to IT, you don't always get the answer that you want, and I certainly don't want to be one to encourage that. But have we stretched that implementation time schedule as well?
We are working through the time schedule as carefully as we can. We have done some extensive analysis in prioritizing. So, for example, in our network design, we are looking to accommodate the high schools as our top priority, our middle schools as our second priority, and then elementary schools, because we feel that our secondary schools would benefit the most academically from a performance perspective by having greater network capacity, and then move the elementary schools into the fall. So, we are still working as diligently and as hard as we can to bring the network improvements into the district this calendar year of 2015. And if it is that we do have to move timelines, we would move timelines to the service centers into the elementary schools so that we take care of the greatest needs first.
Thank you. One other small question, and I tend to repeat all my questions. So, this is a question I asked you some time ago when you came to the Board and requested to hire some consultants to help with the implementation. And we did approve that.
Yes.
And I stated my reasons why I thought that was a good idea. I'm not certain that I remember now the full role of the consultants. I know it was to help on implementation and manage the multitudinous different projects. Do they also serve as advisors to you, or is that beyond the scope of the contract that we approved?
If we go back to September 2014, that is the Board meeting that the Board of Trustees approved that contract. We actually approved two different service providers, one of which is Education Partners Solutions, and we call them EPS, to help us on the front end as technical architects to work with us day-to-day, to help us design the network, which that contracting team has been in place just about every day and at every design meeting. And so, they certainly have influenced our design and have been very valuable. In addition, they have worked with us to prepare our E-Rate applications on the front end, to position the bills of materials in such a way that we can effectively apply free rate. The second service provider that you approved in September of 2014 is iSphere, which is project management team. We have two project managers onsite every day, eight to 10 hours a day, helping us work with vendors, helping us to coordinate schedules, helping us to manage the overall projects of all of the bond goals, there's 12 of them, and they've been doing a very good job, and we're getting better as we move through the timeline.
And so, would you say that what you're asking the Board to approve tonight reflects the input of both of those two companies?
Primarily the technical architects. I view iSphere primarily as a project management team that is not per se a technology expert. They're more or less project managers of the task at hand.
Very good, thank you.
Any additional questions? That'll take us to Agenda Item 5B. The Board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Any questions? 5C, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the February 12, 2015 regular meeting. Questions? That will now take us to our non-consent agenda items. The Board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies, EB Local, school year, EI AB Local, grading, progress reports to parents, makeup work, EIF Local, academic achievement, graduation. Any questions from Board members? I'd like to move that to consent, please. Agenda Item 6B, the Board will consider approving a request for a Texas Education Agency expedited waiver to allow the district to conduct additional staff training for reading, language arts, mathematics, science, and/or social studies training in lieu of one day of student instruction in the 2015-16 school year. Any questions from Board members? I'd like to move that to consent as well. Agenda Item 6C, the Board will consider adopting a resolution to expand the state's investment in pre-K education. We have, yeah, we have a brief presentation from Teresa Hull and Linda Macias.
President Brian, you and the trustees received a revised resolution for your review. Is it at their desk? Okay, it was placed at your place. But this evening, we would like to visit with you just briefly about a resolution that we're hoping that you will support. You may recall, last month, we shared with you a report about pre-kindergarten and the amount it would cost to implement full-day pre-K in our district. You also supported, including the CLC adding full-day pre-kindergarten to its legislative priorities. We know as of now, we have had the opportunity to review two bills that are in reference to pre-kindergarten, House Bill 4 and Senate Bill 801. And these bills certainly support funding in addition to the current half-day funding for pre-kindergarten. But the funds are really for, to support an existing half-day program or full-day program. It's not, it's not really just in support of full-day pre-kindergarten. It's to, it's to enhance or improve either our current half-day program or support more full-day programs. It is a grant-type program, so it's not, it's not part of the ADA with the basic allotment. It's actually a grant program. This evening, we're asking you to consider a resolution that supports full-day pre-kindergarten and calls on the Texas Legislature to expand the state's investment in pre-kindergarten education and institute quality standards. By supporting this resolution, you will join 26 other districts in the Region 4 area that have endorsed a similar resolution calling for our state legislators to act on this important topic. There are also several other districts that are pending Board approval on a resolution. So, we hope that you will consider this and consider endorsing this resolution.
Any questions from Board members?
I just want to comment.
Okay.
I want to thank you for your hard work and going down to Austin and meeting and visiting with these other school districts and making sure we're in line. This is a very important step in the process of developing full-day pre-K. As the superintendent mentioned earlier, you know, we're probably going to have to crawl before we can walk, but every step is so important, and we all know the benefit to cost associated with these types of programs. And I just want to salute you and encourage you to continue to work hard at making this available to all of our kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Well said. Agenda Item 6D.
Don, we don't want to move that to consent, though. I'd like for that to stand alone.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't say anything about consent. You're just saying, "Don't even try it," basically. I got you. I thought it was the same right there, Kevin. Don't go there. We'll let it stand alone, Bob. Okay. Agenda Item 6D, the Board will consider approving the administration's recommendation for the 2015-2016 open-closed campus designations for student transfers. Our presenters will be Teresa Hull, but I'll probably mainly be Kristi, won't it? Kristi, you're on. Kristi, how are you?
Good evening. I'm good, and you?
Good.
We're recommending that the Board declare one high school, seven middle schools, nine elementary schools open for transfers for the 2015-16 school year. Our goal is to provide as many options as possible within the constraints of capacities to accommodate student and parent preferences. We look into consideration campus capacities, enrollment projections, future growth, and staffing efficiencies. The school capacity without portables is our planning capacity of each campus. Capacities at different campuses are based on different designs and different numbers of classrooms. Compared to last year, we had three high schools, eight middle schools, and nine elementary schools for transfer. Portable building allocations will be determined after staffing allocations are made, and after you take action on this item, information about open campuses for student transfers will be publicized on our website. All of our transfers are going to be accepted between April 1 and June 1 of 2015, and the reason we cannot keep transfers open all year is because it could impact staffing. And so, the following campuses are recommended to be open for the limited number of transfers for the 2015 school years. These would be students other than district employees. So, these are the open campuses for regular district kids on this list. And then additionally, the administration recommends that the following campuses be designated as closed for student transfers of district employees' children for the 15-16 school year unless the employee at that campus or works at the campus within the requested campus attendant zone. And then those schools are listed right there. There are five high schools and 11 elementary schools.
Any questions from Board members? Go ahead, Bob.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, then there's actually four high schools that no transfers can happen in. Is that basically what we're seeing here?
For the general public, yes, sir.
The general public, none. Okay, thanks.
There's one open to the general public and five open to district employees. Five closed to district employee, which leaves five open. Right. Yes, I can. For the general public, there's one school that is open, and that is Cypress Creek High School. And for employees, there are five schools that are closed, which are listed right there on the Elmo. And so, the five remaining that are not listed are open for employees, unless they work at a campus within that attendant zone. Then that campus would be open. And that is something new to this year.
We did revise that what Kristi's referring to about campuses within the requested attendant zone. We had applied a one-mile radius criteria last year, and we saw some issues with that. For example, employees that worked in the Fairfield schools, the schools, the high schools that would be within, well, first off, there's not a high school within one mile, and then the high schools closest to them were closed. And so, it made it a real challenge. That brought to the surface the need to look at that criteria. So, we felt the best model that was recommended, and I think it'll work very, very well, is that you would be able to transfer your children to the high school, middle school, or elementary within the attendant zone where you work, so that it doesn't take kids, you know, out of a feeder pattern even for those employees that bring their kids from out of district and they're going elementary to high school in our system, or, you know, take them far off the beaten path for those employees.
Kristi, I just want to confirm a couple things. One, on the transfers, will it remain the same to where if I want my child to transfer to Anthony, and I live right around here somewhere, transport ... transportation's not provided, correct?
That's correct. We do not provide transportation for transfer students.
Okay, and then on these, I think what the public should be made aware of, on some of them, there is a very limited number of openings in those schools. And are we doing this on a first-come, first-served basis?
Yes, we are.
Okay, okay.
Up to 95% capacity.
Okay. Thank you very much. That'll be good information for the public to have if they want to transfer. Any other questions? Did you have anything you want to add?
Nope, that's it.
Great job, thank you. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented Thursday evening. Our last item on the agenda is Agenda Item 6E. The board will consider a Level 3 appeal of a Level 2 decision denying an employee grievance filed by Kelly C.
That's for Thursday.
That's for Thursday. Yes, yes, thank you for asking that. Marty, is this going to be in closed session? Okay. May I have a motion to go in a closed session? Motion, Mr. Hoffman, second, Mr. Koby. Any questions from board members? We will come back out after our hearing, but we won't be taking care of any business, additional business tonight. So, we appreciate you all being here and hope you have a great evening. Take care.